All right. Well, at this time, 6:05, we have a budget work session with the school committee. Welcome, everyone. We're all in attendance, and that's a good thing, and the council's all here. Mr. Levis, of course, leading charge for the school, and Mr. Waters. Would you like to begin, Mr. Waters?
Sure. Well, this is my first review for this type of meeting, so I don't know if I need to introduce our school superintendent and our school committee, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Levis. I know he's got a presentation. It's short, three slides. It's packed, they have it here. Two slides. Nice, efficiency. Better than last year. So, please, Mr. Levis, if you'd like to take it up.
Yeah. Before I start, at the end of the table, I want to introduce Mr. Tom Conlin. And Tom is our interim director of finance. Tom has worked for the public schools in Batoka for over 20 years, was their director of finance. He currently is working for us a couple days a week, and he also is working for...
The Hope Academy.
Hope Academy.
A charter school.
Which is a charter school. And Tom was instrumental, and if you're familiar with Unified Charter of Accounts, those 32-digit number that we have to have, every penny that we spend has to have a 32-digit number, and he was instrumental in the state in terms of implementing that. So he's been very, very helpful with us during this budget process. So, what I'm... Again, I sat in last year. This is one of the first meetings I sat in. It was a very brief meeting. Yes. Thank you. It was a very brief meeting, and it was basically, I know by the ordinance, we have to present the three-year budget projection. I want to be clear that this is not... We're going through the budget process. We just started, but this is our best thinking right now. The slide's up there. I know it's hard to read, but it is in your packet. And what we're focusing on really is, even though we project out FY '20, it's really FY '18. And again, I think how I want to frame this conversation is I don't know how budgets have been done in the past with the municipal, you know, with the town side and the school side, but I want to, you know, just say that we've been very working very closely, Mr. Waters, Mr. Tebow, myself, and Mr. Conlin, just through this process. I know it's an overused word about transparency, but I feel like it's important for all of us to earn trust. You know, I walk into a situation here where there seems to be a lot, you know, those issues in the past and lack of trust, and I've heard that when I met with any individual. So, and as I'll say to anybody, if you have any suggestions where we can be more transparent and more trustworthy, I'm open to them because I feel that, and I always say this, 40%, 30, 40% of the people in this community have children in school, but there's 100% of this community that the budget impacts. And our job is to get, to make sure that people, everybody sees value in this process and that any dollar that we spend, we should be able to connect back to how it's improving performance for our children and for our community. And I want to just frame that because I think that's so important, that we're working together. I never want to blindside Mr. Waters or Mr. Tebow, and I know they feel the same about working with us. So, and that's been the process so far. So in this, if you look at FY '18, basically what we're looking at is we have an increase... We just received numbers from the state based on, this is what, based on the current numbers we receive, 888,796. That would be our last year of increased aid as part of that funding formula. So, again, that can change. We know that the budget, that's what's projected, but the budget can change through the legislators. What we're looking at is, and what we've included in here was the step increases, that is not a raise. We know that the union's taken a 0% increase, but these are their step increases. We incorporate that in this because we know it, we're pretty sure we know what those are going to be. And we also, we also included money, you know, for fringe benefits for other increases in terms of potential increases in the pension. We looked at healthcare, the minimal increases. And then you'll see, if you go above in that second box there, two blocks above the purple line, which says educational rigor. One of our areas of focus this year, major area, is on looking at having high expectations for all students. And so we're going to be looking, and when I get to the second slide, we're going to highlight that a little bit more. But we're looking at, looking across the board in terms of high expectations for all students, making sure that we provide the best education that we can to all students in Coventry. And to do that, though, we know when we challenge students and we want to make sure that we have high expectations for all students, not just some, not just our high achievers, but we also have to look at the social, emotional supports we provide across the board. And so, we've included funds for that, so we've included additional funds, I believe a total of $300,000. And this is just a projection. We're still in the process of looking at all of our personnel. Can we eliminate personnel based on need? But again, because of the ordinance, we wanted to come forward and put our best thinking together. So, we've included one salary position. We've included fringe benefits. So the salary, we put it at $75,000. Fringe benefits, $25,000. Purchased services for $100,000. I know that, you know, that came up as kind of a hot topic. I know there was conversation between Mr. Conlin back and forth with some of the council members, but purchased services for the school side, many things fall in there, including transportation. And as we get in the budget process, we'll make sure that we clearly articulate that. But this could be for like professional development. We have to train our teachers on, one of the things you'll see is we're going to double the amount of AP classes we have. We know how important that is for students to get into top high school, top colleges and universities, and there's training involved with that. And then we also look at the supplies and materials, and this is for the entire district. We put in $100,000. If we start to look at the social, emotional supports, we start to look at some of the material supplies that we need as we increase the rigor. And again, these are just figures that we felt were appropriate, again, as we go through the budget process, that we'll be able to come back and articulate, you know, where every dollar's being spent and why it's being spent. So, when you look at years FY '19 and FY '20, we didn't include step increases. We basically just looked at, you know, what, because we're not going to get any additional funds, we gave minimal increases in terms of our fringe, you know, benefits, in terms of healthcare. We see that just to be level funded, to meet our needs, there's an additional request of $822,000 from the town. And if you look at FY '20, there's a request of $849,000, $829. Now, we know we're in contract year. I think what's important to note, and we've discussed this with Mr. Waters and Mr. Tebow, is that schools aren't known for generating revenue. You know, we usually take what we take. We know that we have to focus on the revenues that we can. And some of those revenue areas are Medicaid reimbursement. We're allowed to, students that have disabilities that are Medicaid eligible, we're allowed to charge Medicaid for certain medical services, and we're looking at that closely. We get a significant amount of money. We use a third-party vendor to do the billing for us, but we're looking to see if we were to take that on, could we maximize? Because if we could maximize, and I'm not saying we can, that's something that we're looking at, is Coogan, who's here, our special ed director, and myself, we've already had a consultant come in and take a quick look at it. But if we find out that we could generate $200,000, $150,000, $200,000 more a year, that's significant, because that could be potentially sustainable. We're also looking at partnering, and these aren't reflected here because we don't know if it's going to happen or not take place. We're looking at our career tech center, and we have incredible facility, but we tuition in approximately 38 students. And we were designed as a regional career tech center, so then we draw from our region. Now, I know the Department of Ed has different guidance that makes that more challenging for us. For instance, Pontiac, it doesn't have, their whole high school needs improved, they have these pathways, they've tuitioned in over 60 students this year. So we need to look at doubling, and we're working closely with our, Ms. Lloyd Ferguson and Mr. Hoben, on what we can do to increase that tuition. And again, that's not included here because that doesn't exist right now. And then the third part that I think is pretty exciting is, and we haven't brought it forward before the committee, but it's important to note during looking at revenues, we've been meeting with an organization, Roosevelt International Academy, and they bring in students currently from China, and they're looking at partnering with Columbia in Brazil. And these students come over here, they attend many private schools for four years of high school, they pay a tuition rate, they pay that rate upfront completely. They also are in public schools. They can, the Homeland Security allows them to have a one-year experience. And we could potentially work out a partnership. Now, again, they're going to come at our school committee meeting and do a presentation before the committee, but we could partner with them and get 20 to 30 students that we could generate between 400, which we could take on in our high school. We have the space. It'd be a great addition to our, to our culture, and we could generate between $400 and $600 a year revenue. That would be sustainable. We had initial tour with the gentleman, who was extremely impressed with our facility, what we offer. So I just want to, you know, as we move forward, we're also looking at the fact that we have to generate revenue. We recognize that, we have to maximize that.
Correct. $400,000 to $600,000.
Potentially.
$400,000 to $600,000.
Potentially, $1,000, right. It's a significant amount. But I think that's important because these are the conversations that we're having, you know, Mr. Shively, when you, President Shively, when you, when the new members were sworn in, I know you talked about, you know, having a new town manager and a new superintendent, and I think that's what we've been hired to do. And so we're trying to not just put it, you know, hear that, you know, people forget, well, we're taxpayers too, you know? We're trying to partner and say, we're going to do our fair share because we want this community to have the best. You know, other things we're looking at doing is we're looking at starting, continuing that, you know, this conversation about a night school down the road. So we want to make this, our schools truly the hub of the community. And I think these are some great ways that I just mentioned that hopefully come to fruition, but you don't see on this, the sheet, but it will allow us to have additional revenues. Because I do believe some of them will come to fruition. So, if you don't mind going to the second slide, and this is just the second... So, if you notice, the first part talks about the three-year projection. Again, it's not the budget, but it's, you know, kind of an overview of what we're looking at. Again, that state aid for year one, I mean, the next year, that's the last year we get that increase. So, there's a lot of reasons why we need to look at generating revenue, but I think nothing more pressing than that's the last year we're going to get that increase. We had a little discussion at our school committee meeting, and we recognized that it's taken seven years for the state to say, this is where we should be, but if you think about it, if we had this revenue seven years ago, where would we be? Like, say if it's taken seven years to get up to $5 million additional revenue, if we had that $5 million seven years ago. And I think that's just something important, that that's just a reality. So the second part, the town funding request, the amount shown represents a total increase for each year less anticipated state aid in FY '18. And then we also know that we have a zero increase in the, you know, so we basically rolled the contract over for one more year, a 0% increase, which I think allows us really to look at our programs, to put some other best practices in place. Nothing makes budget process easier than if we have major successes, right? If we have one of the top 10 school districts in the state, or the top, let's not shoot for top 10, then people can see we're getting our money's worth. And we know that's the work that we have to do. The union knows that, we've met, discussed that. But we're going to be going back into contract negotiations, and so we have a year, and that's the way I look at it, we have a year to really make a difference this year, and part of next year is when negotiating. If you look at number two, we're going to go to there, educational rigor, that's one of our areas of focus. An example I used was the advanced placement classes. We're looking at doubling. Right now, we have six, we instruct 6 AP classes. Students, there's a couple of virtual courses, students have taken, other students have taken the test, but some places, some school districts will try to, you know, add two courses every year. I don't feel like we have the luxury to do that. We have to add, double our courses if we want to compete, if we want our students to compete. The other part is that there's conversation about, you know, right now, we have a 75% pass rate, so of all the students that take AP classes, 75% pass. The bottom line is, it's approximately 160, 170 students that take AP classes. You look at Cumberland High School, 500 students take AP classes. And we know that the more rigor that people are presented, the more students that take the courses with higher expectations, whether they pass the test, we let them pass, but it's going to impact them educationally, and that's something that we need to look at. But we're taking this approach from K to 12. We're looking at all of our courses, making sure that we have high expectations for all students. I think that's crucial. And I'm not saying we don't, but we have to align that. We have to make sure that no matter where an elementary student goes to school, whatever grade one they go in, they have access to the same high-quality instruction, the same resources. I mean, we know it's not fair and equitable when you look at the buildings, right? Ms. Carlson and I had a conversation about Hopkins Hill. We had a school committee meeting the other night at Washington Oak, and Hopkins Hill principal and the PTA were there, and we took little tours around to check out kindergarten classes. And the Hopkins Hill teachers and principal, they're like, just wide-eyed, they couldn't believe, because if you go to Hopkins Hill, you see a school that was built in 1962, that looks like it was built in 1962, and it doesn't matter how clean we keep it. I mean, it's a challenging environment, and that's our reality. And so, we're going to do everything we can do to make sure that there's equal access. We know that we're not going to get there in terms of the facilities, but everything else, students should have that high, those high expectations. So to provide that, we have to look at, looking at our professional development so it's aligned with those expectations, and then looking at the social, emotional needs. There's a lot of research that talks about, you can't just say, okay, we're going to hold kids to a higher standard, but not pair them up with those supports. And so we have to look at all, how do we meet students' social, emotional needs? From the moment they get to the bus stop to the moment they get dropped off. We need to look at that systemically and come up with a plan of action. And so, it's all paired together. And then these are conversations we're having. Again, we're into the budget process right now, but I think that's, that's, those are important tenants of what we're trying to do. And then the last part about capital, it says capital equipment, which is our, we've met, Mr. Waters and myself, there's a document, and in your packet, there's the last seven pages. This is life cycle capital renewal forecast. And I've sent this to the town manager and the finance director, they have a copy of this, as was all of our school committee. This is called a facility condition assessment. So the Department of Ed hired contractors to come up. Numerous individuals came out with different levels of expertise, and they went through all of our building. It took several weeks to go through, and they came up with this 270-page document. In that document, it identifies the repairs that are necessary so that we can provide a top-quality education. This isn't about new buildings. This is about taking what we have and renovating it and improving the quality. So I just, I just printed up a summary. What they did is they mapped it out over a 10-year life cycle. And so, and this isn't about bond. This is about, there's a program, and I'm not saying that at some point the community won't need to go out to bond, I'm not saying that, but there's a program called Fast Track Repair. And what that allows us to do is to pull together, as if we were going to go out for new construction, to have a building committee, for us to have a capital list. It allows us, instead of going out and having to pay, which would probably cost us $80,000 to $100,000 to get this done, it allows us to use this document. I don't know when the draft, Mr. Waters had asked me when the draft, Water stamp was going to be taken off. I called right, I didn't get a response. They didn't give me the answer, I should say, to get a response, but there was no answer. What we're trying to do is, through this Fast Track program, we have to prioritize based on this assessment, capital, make a capital list over the next X number of years. And what we were allowed to do is if these projects individually are under $500,000, we can apply, we can get reimbursed housing aid. There's a process we have to go through that, you know, the school committee chair, I have to sign off on it, we have to have the council sign off on it. But we can get 52% reimbursement. So if we do a million dollars, right, if we come up with a million dollars somehow, and we do a million dollars' worth of repairs that are prioritized, that's very transparent, then we'll get $520,000 back. If there's, there could be a way, and we've talked about this, Mr. Waters and myself, where that, if that money went back into the capital, the school department, we could keep on using that, and the next time, get half of that back. And so that, there's a way to take a million dollars and turn it into like $2.5 million worth of repairs, a little bit more. And so, we could keep on trying to do that, and say, trying to identify how we would get capital. One of the ways would be is if we had surplus, but the school department hasn't had, I think last year, we had approximately $64,000 in surplus. We're not going to get a lot done, though we are, you know, we did talk about using impact fees and making some major repairs, such as the Western Coventry well, which has been a problem for many, many years, and using some other funds that we talked about at our last meeting to finally take care of the Hopkins Hill sand dune issue without any funds coming from the receivership. So we're, we're looking at creative ways of doing some of the work, but this is important. A lot of districts put capital, we do have some capital in our budget, but that's really around technology. This way, this would go on the capital list, and we'd go up, you know, to vote in the capital list, so it's not, doesn't become maintenance of effort. So I think there's a, you know, plus we get that 52% back, as long as we go through the right process. We would be able to start the process this coming June, get it approved in October, final approval in February, so that next spring, we could actually, if we do this right, which would be part of the FY '18 budget, we could actually start to tackle some of these. Because it's, if you look at $76 million over 10 years, it's overwhelming. But if we strategically talk about it, plan for it, and people start to see improvements, I think that's going to change the culture, you know, change the way that you and I feel when we go into Hopkins Hill, right? You feel kind of powerless, and it has nothing to do with the quality of education, but it has, but it has everything to do with the quality of education. So, that's my presentation in a nutshell. Again, this is not the budget. This is just kind of an overview of three years, but really about next year, what's a priority, what's important to us. We do acknowledge that last year, the town supported the schools and gave, you know, what the school was looking for in terms of the contractual obligations and the all-day K, and I think pretty, very surely, we're going to be doing a presentation with the school committee, and we'll welcome you to see the results of all day K. We had a little preview of that last school committee meeting, one of the four different kindergarten classrooms at Washington Oak. But again, I think what, to come back and frame this conversation, that every step of the way, even though the school committee, they're, they're responsible in terms of our, us fiscally, we're working closely, step by step, with the town manager and the director of finance, because we need to be in this together, you know, and I think we have been. You know, I can't speak for Mr. Waters, but, you know, we met, we actually took a seminar, three-week seminar together, some of our staff and the town staff, and we spent time together on just effective budgeting practices for municipalities, and it was, and it was very educational for us, and Ms. Linda I had sat in on it, so we appreciate that. So, we want to do the right thing, we want to make sure that we justify every dollar we spend, you know, and we pick and choose our battles, too, what's important, you know, and we have to try to get consensus to what's important, so.
I'll just chime in and say that, yes, the cooperation between us has been fantastic since my first meeting with Mr. Levis. We've always touched on capital budgeting and budgeting in general, and how the town and schools can continue to work in sync and move forward. I think most importantly, we've always had an eye on the future and the tremendous amount of need that is out there, both for town facilities and for school facilities. And now the tricky part is going forward in the future, finding that right balance. Obviously, we have limited financial resources, especially with our current amount of our debt limit that is already issued versus what we can still issue. I believe it's 3% of our total tax levy, or as better says value, that we can issue. I forget what that total amount is, but it's...
98.
There you go. Somebody's been reading up. But, yeah, so finding that, that right balance, and then figuring out when debt that we have outstanding is paid off, and how that outstanding amount can be reissued, or some portion of it can be reissued, either for school facilities or town facilities. It's just a very precarious balancing act, that, you know, good communication will resolve all issues.
Well, I think it's crucial, obviously, that communication is upfront and with no breakdowns, and I know that both our leaders, I have confidence in. I just had one question on the capital, you know, life cycle capital renewal forecast. If you picked a project, a certain dollar amount, and you started working on that, how would you go about getting the approval upfront from the state, right, and in writing and signs it, and before, you know, the town shows the money to fund it, and then gets the 52% back? Is this a new program?
It's a new, it is, it is, the Fast Track is new.
It is new.
It's been a few years, a few years, only a couple of years ago.
Okay.
It's fairly new. So, so what happened, what would happen is, we don't even need the money to apply, to get approved, because we didn't have money this year.
Right.
Right? We had no money in capital other than what had been approved. So the process is, we have to prioritize capital, come up with a capital list. I know we have a capital list, but since I've been here, we've never even reviewed. I think there's kind of a mindset that, why do it if you're not going to get the money? That, to me, is that whole victim mentality that I can't buy into. So what we'll do is, we're going, Jason and I are going through this now, there's a lot of information here, and that's why, you know, some of it, not everything in here, we might have already completed some of these projects, like, they talk about technology, not hardware, but in terms of the infrastructure, wireless, switches, and things that are, you know, above my head, but they talk about electrical systems, plumbing. So what we're, what we need to do is to go through this and then to prioritize, right? To get a list that we go, and then we get approved, we have to pull together a building commission that will also support that, then we send a letter to RIDE. We'll send a letter, and then they will send us another letter back saying that they either approve the process, that they encourage us to continue forward, to go forward, that the town council would have to sign off on it, we'd have to sign off on it, I believe myself and the school committee chair. And then they will go to stage two, where they're going to look at all the projects. The problem, the thing with the state is they'll, they'll target maybe $30 million for the entire state. So at the end of the day, we will get a letter from them saying that they've approved the project, and that we will be eligible for the whatever percent of the 50, I'm saying it's like 50, between 50 and 52, but I think it was closer to 52%. So we'll get all that in RIDE.
Okay.
And we can do that.
That was my question. I know you've got to prioritize.
Right, well, we got, right. So we, even if we don't get funded, my thing is that we need to be upfront with the community saying, these are, in getting people into our schools, and not crying wolf and not crying poor, which is say, these are our schools. And we need to get, I need a superintendent to get before the school committee, you know, a list that we think's a priority, and then they need to pepper us with questions, myself and Jason, so that we can come to you and say, this is a priority to us, and this is why. And we can get Mr. Reggie involved, we'll definitely keep Mr. Tebow, Mr. Waters involved in the town council. But then, we have, you know, everything else in your capital list, you find. This is an opportunity to get 52% back. And again, I can't control what you do with that, but what I'm suggesting would be, if we could reinvest that, then we could create our initial amount of money that you all have a say in, because you're going to have to, you know, look at our priority list. We could take a pot of money and turn that into two and a half times, you know, based on, you know, I'm not an actuary, but that's the way we looked at some numbers when Jason Martin and myself went to RIDE, and I know Mr. Tebow had been there to meet with the same individual. So, I think this is a good opportunity for us, and again, I'm not mentioning that B-word, bond. You know, you look at, there's some large numbers there, but I think if we can prioritize projects, and I think over, over a short period of time, we can start picking... But I think if we can prioritize projects and I think over, over a short period of time, we can start, people need to see that we're making a difference.
I'm just concerned about the state, you know, in writing, in writing.
Right. There's an approval project, and I'll share that. I can share the documents, thirty-seven pages, I believe, I'll share that. It talks about the whole process. It talks about Fast Track repair and then major projects. Major projects, anything over a half a million, five hundred thousand dollars. And typically, they're looking at additions to a current structure or new structure.
Right. Well, I understand the state funds the Department of Education, you know, being a state center up there. And it's good until they, you know, reduce the funding and that happens all the time. And then they would have to notify you, well, we thought we were going to get thirty million dollars. As it turns out, we're getting fifteen million.
Correct, correct.
And then, okay, project, you know, one, two, and four, we have to remove. But in other words, just before the town commits that money, you'll have their, the letter from the state and that budget passed, correct? I've thought about it at the state level.
So if we, but if we have to get, we may or we may not, because next October, we're talking about FY eighteen.
I understand.
We're doing the FY eighteen budget now. So we're going to prioritize, we're going to prioritize, we're going to put capital items on there that I believe you probably have to say yea and nay to prior to this because we have to have that, that list and that approval, I believe, to go to Ride.
And you said it's been going for a year or two? Do you know any communities that are successful on this?
There are many. I know the community I was from, Smithfield, was successful.
Okay, so it works.
They, they approve the money, so the legislature will approve the money this year before they start allocating, right? So we'll know from Ride how much they are. I think for our, I'm not, I think what we need to do is to look at prioritizing, but then look at what's feasible in terms of, if there's thirty thousand dollar projects, if there's seventy thousand, I think that's a, that's a more realistic way for us.
Very good. This is Carl's, and I know it's a question. It's a Moses.
Okay, Craig, I mean, we, we talked about this, kind of just touched on it a little bit before. When we're looking at some of these buildings, for instance, Hopkins Hill, fairly old, looks like a ten-year project. Are we going to be looking at, as we did with Oak Haven in the R G B report, renovations versus knocked down and new?
So this is renovations?
This is just renovations. Because on a building that's fifty years old, is it worth it? I mean, I, I'm asking because I'm looking at some of these numbers and Western, which I always didn't think of as a very old school, and I'm not sure what's included in the site, but first thing says site, seven hundred and seventy-six K.
So I'm not even, I guess I, full disclosure, I present that to you because that's the document. We're still going through this. We have not presented because, I mean, as you know, there's, there's so much going on. This is something we have to get, this will be part of our budget process. But I still need to go through this because we might come back and say, they've said seventy-six million dollars. We might, we might come back and say, we don't feel that it's worth doing here for this reason. And I'm not comfortable saying that, but I wanted, what I wanted to present was, this is an opportunity for us to take, instead of going out to bond, because we go to bond, then you have, people forget, we have all that interest we're paying, right?
So is there a, are there definitions of exactly what?
Yeah.
Exterior, interior, or mean?
Well, this is just a summary. I can share, I'll share, I'll share this with you. You can go through. I don't, I'm not comfortable telling you exactly what we're going to put forward because if you look at this, there's so many, they take photographs too. There's photographs in here for every school. It's broken down by school. But as we go through it, Jason's creating an Excel spreadsheet. But some of the stuff we're putting, like, some of the numbers we feel are...
You're really not done working with the document?
Oh, not at all, not at all.
It's a work in progress, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, when you're done, we'll be ready to look at whatever you've got.
Right. I mean, we, you know, this, we should be done with this probably by the end of January.
Awesome.
This piece. But I just, I just wanted to show you that this, these are professionals, these are objective. Department of Ed hired them to come in, they're saying seventy-six million dollars. I'll be honest with you, I don't feel, I wouldn't feel comfortable going forward until we're in the top ten, top five school districts, even using, mentioning bond. I think we have a lot, we have a lot of great resources. We need to move forward. No, but I mean, I think this, this community...
I don't want to do the work.
This community's going to have to make some tough decisions. I mean, we're talking about the car tax, right? If they relieve the car tax, but I also know that's thirty percent probably of your revenue. So there's a lot of things, you know, things in the air. And so, we're, we're trying to work very hard with what we have, which is human capital. We have incredible people, right, on both sides. So we'll come back with more detail. We're still working on this.
Thank you.
Yeah, these, these numbers, these were from an assessment company that the renowned department hired? Okay, these didn't come from us, you know?
No, 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 this is an objective. This is a company that we hire. If we're going to do, if we're going to do a feasibility study, we, the town, the school, we have to go out to big. We hire somebody, they come in and do this work. So Department of Ed paid for that.
Yeah.
You know, we don't have to agree with everything, but if we don't, we need to come back with it.
Well, yeah, I mean, for instance, you know, in twenty, in twenty twenty, if you go across the board, I mean, there's fifteen million dollars sitting here in the year twenty twenty.
But that supports what, you know, Councilwoman Carlson's saying is that, some of our buildings, do you invest a lot of money or do you knock them down? But that's not a decision I'm going to make, not to make, not even suggest, so.
Yeah, and again, but that, I mean, that's, and that's only one year.
Right, but that's just, they've broken that out. That's why we have to really do due diligence and have a lot of conversations. But one thing we do know, and the community knows, based on the new police station, is that our facilities as a town are, are...
Aging.
They're aging. And there really hasn't been a plan, and I think, you know, for, I have no idea why, not pointing the finger, but I know that's something that Mr. Waters talks about constantly, is about looking at capital abroad, not putting our head in the sand, but coming up with a plan to tackle this. And so we want to be good partners, just like we were with the, with the Colonel, is, is, you know, we recognize the importance of the police to the community and we want to support that. And we don't want to compete, you know, we're never, we're going to work and support, so. I, I agree with you, it's a lot of money. You know, any one of these years, if you look at totals, it's a lot of money.
Yes, and I mean, but you're talking on an annual basis that the state would have a certain dollar amount that, and you just mentioned a million dollars, probably just a edification of the fifty-two percent.
Right, right. I was just throwing a million dollars up because it sounds...
But what would be a realistic number that we may, you know, award, the, the town might get a maximum type of award?
I don't, I really don't know because I think it depends on not just the number, it depends on the need of the project.
Yeah.
Like, we have a lot of electrical systems that have come through, if you look at this report, there's a lot of plumbing issues, there's a lot of electrical issues. And I think those are safety, those can be safety issues. So I know, and I'll just throw this, I know the community that I came from, and I know we're not Smithfield, that I'm not comparing, but that was the last community I was in. We would receive on an annual basis to do capital projects, three hundred thousand dollars. Then we received another pot of money, I think two hundred, just for technology every year. And that was, you know, so every year, and we have to, you know, pick and choose how we use that money and then sometimes our boilers would go and things like that. But over time, you, you start to have a capital budget, you can start to prioritize. Here, we have very little money to do capital. So we make it, you know, we fix it, quick fix. But you can only put so much duct tape on things, you know, and so I think that's why, whatever we do, we have to come up with a plan that's, I think people need to see us making progress. And that's what we're trying to do here and acknowledge that if we can come up with some money and get fifty-two percent, that's a pretty good deal for us. I don't have any real specifics, I'm sorry.
Uh-oh, and one other question. Are there any, I mean, I know it's all in the planning stages, et cetera, but are there restrictions on, you know, in other words, if we get fifty-two percent back, I mean, is the state restricting those dollars to...
They're telling us we can use this document. They're encouraging us to use this report to do, for the Fast Track repair.
Yeah.
It would be much more comprehensive if we were going, we're going over new construction, you have to hire an educational consultant. They tell you the qualifications, there's only like four or five in the country. They tell us in the document that we can, I mean, in the, in the guidance in terms of how to apply for this, to use this facility's document. So if it's in this document, we can put it on there. But we have to go through the process, we have to have a building commission, we, a committee. We have to get it prioritized and approved by different bodies and signed off, so. But I think this is, this is, to me, this gives us, anything that we choose that's in here, we can put on that. So we have to prioritize that.
I know this is in the early planning stage, but I commend you for even bringing this forward. I mean, and a bond, for me, is not out of the question if we're going to get a fifty-two percent. That's a hell of a reimbursement, so it's really something to look into and I think it's a great idea. You mentioned earlier too, and I don't know if this is the right time to bring it up, but I just wanted to mention because we wanted to give everybody the opportunity, same educational opportunities. And my biggest complaint I'm hearing from the taxpayers, I mean, I didn't do a lot of, have to go out a lot, you know, but talking to the people this past year is about, you know, the money that the teachers are being paid. We have good teachers and I'm not trying to put them down in any way, but my, my point is that the teachers, I don't know, correct if I'm wrong, I think twenty-three, twenty-four in the state is far ahead, is, you know, somewhere along there, and, and, but yet they're, they're a third of what highest paid in the state. Now, I criticize, I'm just telling you that this is what the taxpayers, we want to sell this to taxpayers. We've got to explain to them. So my point is, they're telling me there's something wrong. There's something wrong when we're paying the third of what highest teachers and they get, you know, they're coming out twenty-three, something like, they're not getting their monies with. So I just want you to take your consideration when you're going into negotiations, you're going into everything. So I don't know what it's going to take.
No, but let me, can I just, so two things. One is that I think what's important is that I am not going to negotiate publicly. So people are entitled to, and I'm going to be very...
Yeah, I'm just telling you what I'm here.
Right, but I feel that, so any conversation, when we hit the zero, I made those decisions, not on public statements, but on private conversations I had with council members, certain council members. Secondly is that I, I feel that, what's important is for us that, what we acknowledge is that we've got to do better. And I look a lot of that at leadership. And again, I'm not, I, I tell this in my interview, you were there, Mr. Shively and Mr. Tivo, I said, give me a three-year contract and let me do my job. At the end of the day, it's a mutual conversation, right? I, I was telling that to, I think, Mr. Pearson today. I made a comment to somebody, they said, I plan on retiring from Coventry. And they kind of twisted and said, I came here to retire, right? And I kind of laughed, but I kind of said, that, that's kind of this mindset that I walk into. I'm here to work, I've never had a success in my life that wasn't through people. Like, I love to say that I own stuff, but I don't. We're trying to pull together a good leadership team, we're trying to work very hard. I feel very blessed. I don't always agree with the committee, they know that, but I feel we're very blessed because when I look around the state, and forget the state, we work very well together. And I can't talk about the past. Anybody knows, I speak my mind, I try to be respectful, but I have a job to do. And what I want to do is just become the best, not the best that the money can buy. And in, in the contract that's here, we know that, the teacher's contract, but they, the people here didn't even create that, you know? But I feel that you want the best teachers, like, you know, we all know what transpired the last week, right? We all know what happened and I was last night and I'm funeral today. And I got to tell you that, you know, I can be very negative about the culture here, like this taxpayer thing. I feel like you're going to see, I'm going to go out like I'm campaigning for a job. I'm going to bring those people in. There's a lot of things, we're addressing athletic issues, we're addressing arts, we're addressing a lot of populations, we've done some great work with the homeschool, at-home instruction. I've reached out to the charter school. We have the Green, the Green Charter School, we have thirty-some odd students who are Coventry. I'm going to the board meeting, January ninth, the Father John V. Doyle, because those are our students, right? I'm trying to reach out and get people to see, not just like the gentleman from Roosevelt Institute that walked through our high school and said, oh my God, all these things you have to offer are wonderful. Sometimes you got to look at things through other people's lens. So what I'm saying is that we have incredible people here. My point about today was, last night, we had teachers, administrators, guidance counselors with groups of kids, making sure that every single kid was okay. That's culture. That's what you want to be proud about. I'm very proud of this community and this, our school community, but the way we're going to resolve that is we have to do better. And it's about leadership, to me. And leadership isn't just me, but I think the superintendency is important. I think the town manager is so crucial. And you said that, you have a new town manager, new superintendent. And my suggestion is, let us do our job with your guidance and your support. The school committee's role is governance and of the budget, fiscal responsibility. But I push back, I need to be allowed to do my job. We worked together, we talked about things, we talked about strategies, we talked about what's necessary. There's a lot of elephants in the room when you talk about taxes in this community. They need to be addressed. Whether they, they get it addressed or not, that's up to the elected officials, but it's not going to be for the lack of the people you've hired trying. So what I'm saying is, let us perform, let us do the best that we can, let us improve the student performance. And then you're going to start to see people, instead of concentrating on what people make, they're going to start being proud. I want to make it hard for people to not have their kids that live in Coventry, not go to Coventry. So I hear what you're saying, but I think there's a lot of people out there that are... Hundred ninety-six people passed this budget last year. Hundred ninety-six out of thirty-seven thousand residents, right? How many, how many, you know, that, that is ridiculous, right? So I'm going to make sure that, at least my part, like, we're doing a listening session Wednesday night. Last time we did a listening session, we had twelve taxpayers in the room. Half of them were people running for election, right? Half of them were people that are already elected, right? So my point is, is that tell us what else we can do to be transparent. But I'm not, I'm not a fool. I hear loud and clear, but you've got to allow me to do my job because if people start to try to negotiate outside, then you, you should be interviewing for superintendent. You should be running for school committee, vice versa. And so that's all I ask moving forward, I hear that. But I feel that we have incredible people and you've got to allow us to hold people accountable, right?
I, I get that. And you guys are absolutely heading in the right direction. I have no problem with it and I do want you to do your job. Between you and the town manager, I think we're going in the right direction. However, it's a tough sell for us as elected officials to sell this to the taxpayers. And regardless, we only have a hundred and ninety-two. We hear it from the three thousand people out of out there, you know, because they don't ask them to get involved and shame on them. However, we, we want to make sure, that's their concern. And they don't see the big picture like, like we do, and I believe it, I think.
We have to make tough decisions sometimes, right?
Understood, understood. And that's what we get, you know, as elected officials, we have to make tough decisions too. So I'm just asking that, you know, I want this school to, we, we have a great school department and I want it to be even better, you know, and we, we all can do that.
Right, I agree.
That's my point.
I agree.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Bacon, you have any questions or...
No.
Okay, all right, I didn't want to leave you out. Okay. Mr. Waters, any follow-up or Mr. Tivo? I know we have a few minutes left with just the school committee and their administration. If there was anything else, any...
No, just more to review in the future.
More to review and it's a work in progress. And again, we, I personally, I think we all do confidence in our leaders, town manager and our superintendent schools. And it's kind of nice, coincidental maybe, that the same year you came in together knew and let's hope that's a good thing.
I could be as flatter, that's the downside of this.
Nothing to do with age. Nothing to do with age, Mr. Levis. Otherwise, I'd be in trouble.
I know I don't look fifty-five, I know that's what you're thinking.
And I, I definitely don't look sixty-five and a half. Other than that, I guess, I guess we can maybe take a five-minute break because we're due back in here at seven, seven P M. with our state representation. So, very good. Five-minute break, we'll be back in here.